All right, eighth graders, can you hear me? You need me to talk louder? Come on. So, welcome to the 2025 Mock Town Meeting. You guys have been working for almost a month preparing for this. So, let's go and get started, all right? So, I'm gonna start off by introducing your state representative, Representative Kilcoin, who is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and give us a little, you know, opener. And then we'll go and have everyone who's onstage introduce themselves, and we'll get started.
All right, if I could have everybody all rise, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, you guys can take a seat. I'm just gonna say a brief hello before you get into the many, the many articles of business you have before you today. But for those that don't know me, my name is Meg Kilcoin. I'm state representative for the town of Clinton, so I'm your state representative. And so what I do is I am elected every two years to represent the town of Clinton and the surrounding communities in the district at the State House. And so, what I'm so, I'm always, this is, I think, my third time joining all of you for your Mock Town Meeting. And what I, I love being here, I love trying to watch as much as I can. I will be going into the State House later today for a full formal session to vote. But what you all are doing, what you all, all the work you've put into it, all the work that you'll do today, you are truly embodying democracy in action. I have been involved in public service and government for now almost fifteen-plus years. And the one thing that I always found so fulfilling when I was entering, when I was an adult entering into the workforce is it is so important to give back and support the community around you. And I think all of you will find, and I've been looking at your articles that you've all been working on, what you have here before you is clearly a thoughtful document that represents the values, not just of each and every one of you, but the values of this community. And one day, when you are old enough to vote, when you're old enough to participate in service, and some of you will be able to participate in democracy if you want, well, before you can vote, you will be, have the ability to shape, not just your community, not just your town, but your state and your country as well. You really can make a real difference on people's lives and your lives and your family's lives. I know in my work, I've had the opportunity to see in real time that the efforts of, of working with people like that are to my left here, of working with my neighbors and friends, that you can really work together to build something amazing. And so, all of you have, I know, done this as part of your schoolwork, but I am just really impressed and excited for all of your futures because clearly you all are very mindful, thoughtful citizens. And I am really excited, not just your future, but for this community. So have fun with this today, and I'm really happy to welcome you all. I would also encourage you, if you haven't had a chance to visit the State House in Boston, if you want to learn about more, what goes on there, you have an open invitation to come visit me anytime you want, and hopefully I'll have a chance to visit all of you. But enjoy the day, have fun, support each other, and just congratulations on all the work that you've all put in because you really are taking steps that not many adults even have done. So, I think that you're, we're in good hands, and I know you're getting close to vacation. So have fun today, enjoy the day, and congratulations again on all your hard work this year and all the work that put into making this happen. So thank you very much, and with that, I will turn it back to, I think, Terri Agano, right?
Yep, Mr. Agano. So if everyone would just go down line.
Thank you very much.
So, yep, Mr. Moderator, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, and then we'll just go down the line so the students just have an idea of everyone who is here.
All right, my name is Terrence Agano, and I am the town moderator. And next, we'll have these town officials introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie, I'm the Parks and Parks Director.
I'm Sean Kerrigan, I'm on the Select Board.
Matt Cobus, Select Board.
Kevin Bartlett, Superintendent of Public Works.
Brendan Bailey, I'm a member of the neighborhood.
Lee Abdallah, the Community and Economic Development Office.
All right, so, Mr. Moderator, I have taught the students Robert's Rules of Order, so if you don't mind, I would just like to make a motion, just for formality, but it lets us go through it. I would like to make a motion to get your permission to allow students and any teachers who do not live in Clinton to be able to speak and participate because we are not residents in the town.
Absolutely granted for this, no doubt.
Thank you very much.
Shall we start?
Yes, so if one of, member of our Select Board wouldn't mind going and reading the motion and making the, or rather, taking up Article One.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from the stabilization fund the sum of $124,820 or any other sum, said sum to be expended by the Department of Public Works to fund the projects as described below and to create a committee to organize a Clinton fair or act in any manner relating thereto. A, to spend $111,820 to establish an annual Clinton fair, which we held at Clinton Veterans Athletic Complex. The money shall be used to pay for rent and carnival rides, hiring security, and any other necessary expenses determined by the Clinton Fair Committee. B, to spend $13,000 to convert the community garden located at 159 High Street and 329 High Street into public parking. C, the town of Clinton will partner with Pay by Phone to create a paid parking system in town. All parking in public areas will be subject to parking fees at a rate to be determined by the Select Board.
Second.
All right, Article One has been read to you, and we have speakers to...
We have two student speakers who are going to come up to go and introduce this. So can our two student speakers, please, come up?
Remember, remember to talk very close to the microphone.
You gotta get right up on their, get right up to the microphone, really close.
Very close.
We are proposing to create an annual Clinton fair. Every year, we run a successful Old Home Day, and we believe this would be a successful event as well. There are other towns that have large fairs, such as Bolton, and Clinton does not have annual events that bring people from other towns to our town. A fair like this would encourage out-of-town visitors to come to our town and spend more money here, supporting our business. We have calculated that we could get our fair up and running for a small investment of a little over $100,000. The money we are asking for would pay for rent and carnival rides, security, portable toilets, and trash collecting. We believe that, that Clinton Fair has a strong community, and there would be many people, people willing to step up and volunteer to help run the event, just like people do for Old Home Day. We believe this event will not only pay, pay for itself, but will make money for, for the town. Local businesses that wish to sell concession stands will pay for a small fee of $100 a day to have, a day to have a booth. Visitors will buy tickets, which allow them to participate in rides activities. In addition, we'll offer to purchase wristbands, which allow unlimited rides. This system works very similar to what our neighbors at the Bolton Fair have run and works successfully for them.
Most years, the Bolton Fair makes a profit. In 2022, the Bolton Fair made almost $100,000 in profit, according to their 51c drilling with the state. This would be a great way to bring the community together and generate revenue for our town. Parking on High Street is difficult because there are usually few spots available. The community garden is not being used, and this location would make a great candidate for making additional parking spaces. The town owns the parcel at 329 High Street, and this would also be a great spot to convert for additional parking. We also support creating a paid public parking system in town to generate income, which will be added to the general fund. Many other towns and cities have pay-by-phone systems that do not use the old parking meters. For example, Lamstar generates between $70,000 to $350,000 from parking fees. Partnering with a company to create the paid parking system will not only pay itself off, but will generate extra revenue, which can be used on other projects. We appreciate your time and consideration of the article they have brought forward. Think about how much money this will bring our town in the long term, both Article One.
All right, thank you very much. Now, the town officials up here may have something to say about that. They have inside knowledge about maybe who owns the land, for instance, on the community garden, things like that. So, questions, comments, or discussion, either from the floor, or maybe we should start up here with Lee?
Sure. Hi, everybody. So, to explain a little bit more, so I am the Downtown Development Consultant within the Community and Economic Development Office, which means I do all the random weird things, okay, it's a technical term. So, I handle like Halloween walk and the tree lighting, mural, and some other things like that. So, the event planning, I can definitely congratulate you guys on. I know it's a lot of work to put together an idea for an event, and where do you put it? How do you situate it, what time of year you have? You know, you should host it, and all those things, so I think that's wonderful. And this is my first year doing this, so I'm a little bit new to how to respond to those sort of things. I think it's a fantastic idea. I think that, and we have a lot of discussion in my office and amongst the people on this committee about, you know, a community really benefits by having community events. And those events really, the ones that are successful are the ones that are brought forward by people in the community. It's their idea, and they're the ones who execute it, so I think it's a fantastic idea. As far as, I also am actually actively having meetings and conversations about parking in downtown. We're looking at it right now, and we're gonna be doing some meetings with the community soon, so thank you for your suggestions. The community garden is not owned by the community.
It is not?
No, it is privately owned property. But again, part of the job of this committee, my position and different people up here, is to try to work and collaborate with private property owners to hopefully do what is good for them, but also good for the community. So those are very valid ideas. As well as, you know, the idea of that our downtown is growing and it's improving, and it's getting more exciting and more fun, right? I mean, whoever thought there'd be a candy store here a couple of years ago, right? And with that comes more people trying to park and trying to get down here. So that, your comments on it and things on it, is just a sign that we're doing good things for the town. It's a good problem to have, as we like to say.
All right, thank you. Are there any students that would like to make a comment, get their credit, right? Okay, go ahead, Susan.
And I encourage everybody to speak slowly and clearly so that we can understand you up here, because we're old people.
We need to be very close to the microphone.
Yep.
This board up here, and you kids too.
Talk at like half-speed that you normally would.
Get really close to the microphone, it's gonna feel a little weird how close you have to get.
Susan Rug, Meeting House Hill Road. I do not support article one because Clinton already has Old Home Day, and from personal experience with Sterling Fair, it costs a lot to run the fair and also to pay for the cops and the carnival rides.
All right, thank you, thank you for your comment. Who else would like to speak? Just raise your hand, go ahead, Morgan.
Morgan Lamb, Spur Street. I disagree with Article One because there are successful fairs nearby, and I'm worried that the fair will not get enough attention and will be a waste of money.
Thank you. Yep, go ahead, Carly.
I disagree, oh wait, sorry. Carly Sharon, Miles Standish Road. I disagree with Part C of this article because people will avoid public parking on High Street if this is put into act, therefore affecting the shops around the area.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Torrin, go ahead.
Torrin Culkins, Water Street. I agree with Section B because a lot of drivers in Clinton park on the curb.
For, just for our members in the, who are on the stage and also for all the students, I know that we would mention that the community garden is not owned, it is privately owned. The property that they mentioned, that 329 High Street, which is right on the end there, I believe that that is owned by the town, is that right?
Yes, it is owned by the town, and we are actually actively working on what's called an RFP, which is a request for proposal, which is opening it up to private entities to see what we're gonna do with it. So, there's a lot of different ideas and options on the table. A lot of people have approached the town about purchasing it over the years, so we're going to be looking at that this summer, so, so good call on that, guys.
So that's really cool, you guys are actually, the group who came up with this is really coming up with an idea, something that they are actually actively looking at, so that's really cool. Would anyone else like to make a comment, okay? Luisana, go ahead.
Luisana, Saya's Pearl Street. How would bringing a fair to Clinton benefit Clinton and its citizens?
Okay, so we have a question, is there someone from, yeah, it was great. Is there someone from that class? So what would be some of the benefits of having a fair? Is there anyone who's willing to go and respond to that? Why should we make this Clinton fair? You gotta defend your article.
My, my question would be, would this replace what we do in the park each year? Or is this, is this like that, you know, Old Home Days, which is a, a big, a big event in the town of Clinton in early September? Or would this be an additional town get-together? I'd like to know that.
Anyone from our first-period class, go and say why you think it would be a good idea to have a fair? You guys did a lot of research on it, Jenna, go ahead.
Jenna Borg, John F. Kennedy App. I think it brings a lot of money to the town, and it brings people from like other towns to come here.
Yes.
Great, great point. And I think, you know, I think a lot of people in this room have been to the Bolton Fair or Sterling Fair before, right? So that's an example of people from Clinton going to other towns for a fair, so the idea would be kind of the reverse, right?
Mr. Moderator? Miss, I'm right here, sorry. One thing, when I'm trying to convince somebody to, to pass something, I don't think of, I don't think of in terms of me's, eyes and me's, I think of in terms of yours and we's. So, people, I've found at town meeting and other town governments, don't pass things usually out of fear and lack of knowledge. People don't like change, people don't like to spend money if they don't know they're gonna get something for it. So what I try and do is think of the value that it's going to bring to them, how it's gonna make their life better. And because change is hard sometimes, spending money is always hard. So that's what I think of when I'm trying to convince somebody. Not that, you know, the money is nice, but as Lee was saying, we're really in the people business here. That downtown is about people walking around and having a good time. It's the places that they go to, and it's, it's, it's about places that people want to be. So, that's what I would think of if I'm gonna try and defend something, is how does it bring value to you? And that's just something I'd keep in mind.
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you, yes.
So another part of this process, we just had this conversation the other night at the annual town meeting. When you're coming up to present your idea, you're not trying to convince this board or the, or the moderator as to why this is a good idea. You're trying to convince the voters behind you. So when you're speaking, even though these microphones are facing towards us, realistically, your message needs to be to the floor because ultimately, in a few minutes, when you do vote on this, it's gonna be your votes that, that carry something or defeat something, not, you know, this isn't trying to ask our permission, right? So, very good.
Thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Cobus. And in fact, we have, we have enough time for just one more person who'd like to make a comment or something? Go ahead, Anya, and then we will be going on to having a vote, Mr. Moderator, and we'll move on to Article Two.
Anya Roy, Winter Street. I do not agree with this article because Clinton already has a parking rec, and this seems like a waste of money, given that Clinton has free and affordable activities for everyone in Clinton, as well as for people in surrounding towns. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Moderator, I have some good news.
Yes.
Administrator Ward just arrived, and he has the voting cards for everyone to be able to use, what they use at the actual town meeting. So you're gonna receive this little purple card, and when you are going to vote, you hold that card up. It makes it easier for the moderator, who's standing on stage. Instead of trying to count hands, it's pretty easy to be able to look for these bright purple cards. So we'll pass those out, and then in just a moment, we will have our first vote. And what you are voting on is whether or not to pass Article One. So if you pass it, all of it will happen. If you fail it, it does not happen.
You know, I can't emphasize enough what was said up here, that, and it really was even brought to my attention Monday night as well, that, that everyone on, up here on this stage could be against something, and it wouldn't matter because you're the ones who count, you are the voters. So, when you're addressing people, you really are trying to convince all of these people, not these people, that we need to do this for this reason or that reason or whatever. So remember that, there's tremendous power in town meeting. I, I don't think even regular adult citizens understand how much power they really have in a vote. And you'll find that out soon, and I hope you always exercise that right to vote.
Mr. Moderator, we are ready for a vote.
Wonderful. All right, Article One, we've discussed it, we've had some comments up here, some great comments down below. All in favor of Article One? Please raise your cards up high at this time. Thank you very much, hands down, all those opposed to Article One. I believe Article One was approved, thank you very much.
It's been approved, that was a pretty close one, though.
Article Two.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from the stabilization fund the sum of $781,900 or any other sum, said sum to be expended by the Department of Public Works to fund the projects as described below or act in any manner relating thereto. A, improve pedestrian safety by adding electric crosswalks at the following locations: the corner of Union Street and Main Street, between Union Street and High Street, between Chestnut Street and Mechanic Street, and across from 1031 Main Street. B, to establish an electric bike rental system by purchasing electric bikes, electric bike charging stations, and the property at 678 Main Street to function as the headquarters for the rental program.
Second.
All right, Mr. Murray, do we have comments from up on the stage first, or student comments first?
We'll have our student speakers come up first, so that way the members on the stage can also hear the background, why the students are going for this, and then we'll have comments from the stage.
All right, speakers. Gonna go very close to the mic.
Hello, my name is Abby McGowan.
And my name is Matt Fittow.
And we are here to explain our proposal to improve pedestrian safety and create a bike rental system. There are not currently enough designated crosswalks, and drivers often do not pay attention to them as much as they should. Most of these, the crosswalks are simply white painted lines, and we believe our crosswalks need visibility enhanced along with signals. These areas that we are especially concerned about are the intersection near Dunkin' Donuts, between Union Street and High Street, across from Apple Country, and across from McDonald's. These are some of the most busiest intersections in town, and students are often trying to cross these areas. According to the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety, between 2017 and 2021, there were approximately 76 pedestrian fatalities. These are often happened when it was difficult to see in the pedestrian, to see the pedestrians because it was dark. Our proposal to add these electronic crosswalks would reduce, reduce fatalities by increasing visibility in these areas. This, these will cost $32,000 to install. That might sound expensive, but it is worth it because it, we will be preventing pedestrian fatalities. Our, our budget has also included the cost of adding sidewalk railings along sections of Main Street. We believe that these will be best placed near Jack's Mill. Due to there being an increase of apartments in this area, there will be more foot traffic. Adding these railings will prevent situations like a ball from a children's game going into the street. These areas, this area is also prone to foot traffic because of Dunkin' Donuts, and these will help keep more people safe when they are trying to cross.
Our article would also install electric bike chargers, purchase electric bikes, and create a location to run an electric bike rental program in town. We would be purchasing the property at 678 Main Street to use as a headquarters for the program to be run. Clinton residents could visit this facility to rent bikes, turn them in, and fix them if needed. Our proposal to add an electric bike rental system will improve traffic in our town as well because there would be fewer cars on the road. Bikes are also less damaging to roads. If more people were using these kinds of bikes instead of cars, it would be, it would lead to the town having to pay less money on road maintenance. These bikes are also better for the environment because they release less pollution into the air we breathe. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our ideas to improve our town. We hope that you implement our ideas and vote yes on our article.
Thank you very much. All right, this seems to affect the DPW more so than anyone else. Would you like to make some comments, sir?
Mr. Moderator, Section A of Article Two, very good. It's good for the, for everybody, students, citizens of the, the town, visitors, to maintain safety while crossing the streets. Just trying to figure out where 1031 Main Street is for a better idea of, of the location.
I believe, it's right across, was it from McDonald's? There's some, there's some place I know that the students like to frequent, and they feel kind of unsafe crossing the street there, which is why they had put that specific location.
Thank you.
Any other comments from, from the stage?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, just, I guess a comment and a question. I love the idea of pedestrian safety. If you think of, we talked about people on High Street before. I look at the difference between High Street and Main Street, and you can see, not to get too in the weeds, but we couldn't build High Street the way we have it today if we had to build it from scratch. There are rules now as far as development, and unfortunately, I think a lot of development is based around cars. So if you look at Main Street, you drive to Walgreens, then you drive to Hannover, then you drive to the auto store. On High Street, you park your car, and you can get a taco, you can go to the gym, you can get a coffee, you can go to the hardware store, you can look at a real estate place, you can get your nails done, all in one spot. So we have to make it safe for people to be able to get out of their cars and walk around and cross the street, so I think that's a great idea. The bike system I like too. The question I would have is why this place, when we have, I think we're spending half-million dollars on the property, I would maybe look at properties we have now where people, again, are in the area. We have town parking by the elementary school, we have town parking off of Walnut Street, and I would maybe look at, since we already have charging stations there for cars, maybe look at a cheaper way to do that is, is, before we make it a huge program, maybe try a trial program in some spaces that we own already.
Thank you, all right.
Any students like to come up and make a comment about this one? Claire, go ahead.
Just reminding everyone again, we, we have a little bit of trouble, I think, on the stage hearing you, so you have to be real close to the microphone.
Claire Shanley Pine Street. If you add the electric crosswalks, would it increase the rate of traffic?
I don't know if anyone in this, on the stage maybe has a comment about that, if you know traffic patterns? The issue would be, their question is, by adding those crosswalks, would it increase the amount of traffic in the area?
Would it reduce?
Sorry, would it be increasing, sorry, yes, would it, by adding those?
I don't, I don't think so. I think the, the regular traffic pattern would remain the same regardless of, just if there was heavier foot traffic in that, in a particular area, and you have more people crossing and pushing the buttons, the, those are, they're called RRFB signals. They're rectangular, rapid flashing beacons. Those are the ones that you see, they're wired, not wired, but they communicate with each other. So once you hit one side, both will illuminate to let the drivers know that somebody's waiting at the crosswalk to, to cross the street.
And, Mr. Moderator, sometimes we have to make unpopular decisions up here. This is one I'd be happy to make. I will always vote for people over cars, so if we had to take a hit on that, I'm, I'm happy to do it.
Other comments?
Other comments, who would like to go? Yaseen, go ahead.
This guy's dressed better than I am. This guy's dressed better than I am.
Yaseen Ibrahim, Main Street. I propose to amend the article and get rid of Section B, because I believe that the idea of adding the crosswalks is a pretty good idea, but I think that the bikes would be like a liability for people to get injured, or break the bikes, and cause a lot of, it would add more problems than problems that it would be fixing. So I propose to get rid of Section B.
Okay. Thank you. You would like to amend Article two, and by doing so, delete completely B.
Yeah.
Correct? All right.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Yes, there's a second.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Now you're really making me work, so here we go.
All right, so, very well done, very exciting, we have amendment. So, here's, we only have a couple minutes before we're off.
Okay, from this point forward now, the next part of the discussion has to be about that amendment only. So if anyone would like to speak, either on the stage or down below.
Jimmy, you want to talk about whether or not we should keep the bike system, is that your comment?
Right.
Yep, all right, yeah, Jimmy.
We're only talking about B now, and, and his amendment. Go ahead.
Jimmy Labo, Main Street, I agree with Article two about the bikes, because it will benefit teenagers without any transportation around the town, and it would just be easier for them to travel with their friends.
So he wants to keep that section about the bikes in there, he does not want to get rid of it. Does anyone else want to share their opinions on that? Ian, come on up.
Remember, we're talking about the amendment now.
So just about whether or not we should keep that section about renting bikes.
Shall we keep B or not, is the question.
Ian Bukary, Branch Street, I think it'd be great to keep the amendment, no, to keep the...
Yep, keep, keep the section.
The section, because it'd be great for people without access to vehicles to get around town.
All right, thank you.
Great point, thank you.
You think that we should keep B in there. Someone else?
Tristan, all the way over there. Jack, you can go next, okay?
Tristan Cutler, Terrance Avenue, I think it is a good idea to keep Section B, as it allows people to tran, to have transportation around town without walking.
All right, thank you. He wants to keep Section B.
I'm gonna have two other students come up, Mr. Ngano, and then we'll have a vote on the amendment.
On the amendment, yep.
Yep, Jack?
Jack Duriel, Kitchen Place, I feel that it would be a, I feel that keeping Section B would be good, because it would be a good alternative for people that can't afford an actual electric bike.
All right, thank you. Dan, we have one more speaker, Dan.
Daniel for Crown Street, I, I think this article is good, this article will help people, some people cannot buy a car, or do not have cars, so this article will help then, those people.
So you'd like to keep B as well?
You would like to keep it as well.
All right, shall we vote?
We're gonna have a vote on the amendment now, so what you're voting on is just whether or not we should take out that Part B about the rental bike system.
All right, everybody understand that, so this vote, when you raise your card, all we're doing is talking about the amendment. Shall we keep B in this, this warrant article, or shall we defeat the amendment? So all those in favor of the amendment to, to delete B completely, raise your cards now, please. All right, and all those opposed to this amendment, raise your cards now. All right, the amendment is defeated, so now we're back to the original warrant article, back to two, Article two, the way it was written. And are we ready to vote now?
We're gonna have one student come up, Arthur, you want to speak? And then we'll go into a vote about the whole of the article, Mr. Ngano.
Art Vascerwa, Main Street, I agree with Article two, because electric bikes are very useful for people to transport around town.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Moderator, let's, we have a vote.
All right, so now we're talking about the original, the original warrant article as given, since the amendment was defeated. So all those in favor of Article two as written, please signify by raising your cards now, please. Thank you very much, cards down, and those opposed, cards up. All right, Article two has been approved, nice job.
Congratulations, my Period Two class.
All right, we're on to Article three.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer from the stabilization fund, or take from available funds the sum of $18,000, or any other sum, said sum to be expended for promoting local businesses to hire 14 to 17-year-old Clinton residents, by providing those businesses with stipends or a tax reduction of $600 per hire. The businesses and teenage workers will appeal to the select board, who will have the final decision on the program, or act in any manner relating, excuse me, relating thereto.
Second.
All right, Article three has been moved and seconded. Student speakers, please, on Article three.
Good morning, my name is Angelina Halloran, and I'm a part of Mr. Braille's eighth-grade Block Six class, also known as Hawaii. Today, we will be demonstrating why we believe that there should be more jobs in town for students in the age range of 14 to 17 years old. We all agree that this is a good idea due to the fact that it provides adolescents with more knowledge to business and for future job experience. Businesses can help, businesses can help individuals under the age of 18 with financial security, independence, maturity, skill, and confidence. The businesses that are hiring to the youth aren't too local. For example, Market Basket located in Hudson is hiring, although it isn't in town and quick for minors to arrive. Whether it's being late, not having a ride, or leaving school and rushing to work, we feel the need to have more businesses locally that are willing to hire young individuals, and want more stores in town to hire students throughout the ages of 14 to 17 years old, because we can't easily get to the businesses that are out of town. We want to focus more on small businesses with this bill, and gather more information about what businesses want, as well as programs like this that have worked elsewhere.
Very well said.
My name is Aliana. Furthermore, a possibility we have in mind is if an occupation is willing to lend job opportunities to 14 to 17-year-old minors. The business lending to the careers would gain a tax credit of $600. We are aware that in the state of Massachusetts, anyone under the age of 17 is expected to have a working permit due to them not being able to work full-time hours as an adult would. So therefore, when we say our topic as in providing students with more job opportunities, we're also aware and mindful that they would have to apply to a part-time job due to the state rule.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hennessy. In addition, if you give us this opportunity, students will most likely be educated on how to apply academic knowledge to real-world situations. With taking everything into account, we hope that you will approve this warrant article to help adolescents be gainfully employed in town, and to teach students to become responsible in society or workforces. Thank you for your time, and we hope you take this into consideration.
Thank you very much. Some comments from county officials on the stage. Yes, Lee.
I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it's something that benefits not only the 14 to 17-year-olds in town, it can benefit small businesses, but it also fosters a sense of community. It adds, you know, to that age group being active, not just after school, but in the summer, it gives you job skills for future life, and it can frankly benefit the businesses by, you know, increasing traffic to them and getting them some extra assistance, so. Well done, you guys, good, good job.
Yes, it, I think it's, I think it's great, I think old timers like myself sometimes hear too often, the kids don't want to work, which obviously is not true. They do want to be employed, they do want to work, they do want to make a little bit of money while they're going to school or whatever. So I, I love the idea. Any other comments from the stage?
Mr. Moderator, just wanted to acknowledge that that was an excellent presentation.
Yes.
Very well written.
Yep. Nice job. Students who would like to speak on this issue?
Go ahead, Kaylin.
Kaylin Gibson, Kilmary Street, I agree with this article, because hiring teens can allow them to have more opportunities to pick what they want to do later in life.
Luna, is that Luna? Yep. Anthony, you can go next, all right?
Luna Jimenez, Clark Street, I agree with this article, because I think teens should have more responsibilities of having a job, and also have more opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, you can go on up.
Who's next?
I agree with this article, because it encourages businesses to hire teenage users, which allows them to get important, their learning experiences and skills that they will need later in their life.
Thank you.
Good point, very good point, okay?
Others, Jade?
Hadalani Tejeda, Greeley Street, I agree with Article three, because it promotes local businesses to hire 14 to 17-year-old Clinton residents by providing those businesses and teenage workers. There's not many jobs that allow 14-year-olds to work, so this will be a perfect opportunity.
Go ahead, Connor.
Connor Dewey Martin Street, I agree with this article, because it gives more students job experience for later in their life.
Very good. Sally, you want to go?
Sally Friedje Grove Street, I agree with Article three, because it can be difficult for 14 to 17-year-olds to get employed, since a lot of businesses don't pay as much attention to them as to older people, and can overlook them as bad workers. And this proposal would create more job opportunities for teens, and it can also teach them a lot, and give them working experience, and can make more connections between teens and adults of Clinton.
Really great point, thank you. We have enough time for one more comment, if anyone would like to make it, yep?
Callie Lutz, Pine Street, I agree with this article, because it can teach kids about the real world.
And that's for that. All right, are we ready to vote? Mr. Murray?
Yes, sir.
All right, we want to do the traditional vote, or do you have some other thoughts in mind?
Oh, we haven't done a voice vote yet, and these kids like to be loud, I've heard them in lunch.
I, I bet you.
Okay. This is when you get to be loud, are you ready? Yeah, someone's excited.
We're going to do a voice vote?
Yep, we'll do a voice vote, so this is generally not, you will see this done actually in Congress, but not so much generally in town governments, I think, right, Mr. Ngano?
No, we don't allow it at town meetings.
You don't actually allow it? Yeah. So basically, it's whoever is louder, whichever side, we'll do the yeas or the nays, is what we'll do, okay? So, are you ready?
Here we go, so all those in favor of Article three, please shout out yay. All right. But to be, to see democracy in full swing, we also have to say, all those opposed to Article three, please shout nay. I believe Article three has been approved, thank you, good job.
Congratulations.
All right, Article four.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town... I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from the stabilization fund the sum of $457,900, or any other sum, said sum to be expended by the Parks and Rec Department and Animal Control Officer to fund these projects described below, or act in any manner relating thereto. A, to spend $250,600 to build a new playground and soccer field at the Lakeside Field. B, to spend $15,200 to improve and renovate the playground at the Philbin Memorial Splash Pad. C, to spend $186,700 to create a municipal-owned and-run shell, uh, animal shelter located at 1042 Main Street, B.
Second.
All right, Article four has been moved and seconded, and we have student speakers for Article four.
Yes, we do, two student speakers, please come on up.
My name's Kevin Carrigan.
And my name is Michaela Yao.
We will be presenting a speech on why the playgrounds at Lakeside and the Splash Pad should be improved, and to add a town-run animal shelter. The playgrounds at Lakeside and the Splash Pad could really use improvement, because they are not being utilized to their full potential. Having an animal shelter would be beneficial to the town, because it'd be a way for people to adopt animals. Playground, playgrounds are important, because they help children build developmental social skills, such as greeting others and learning to apologize. They provide a place for children to be more active and support a healthy lifestyle. Furthermore, they have modern, furthermore, having modern public facilities for children improves the value of homes in the area. We have a student, we have a student that went to look at the current condition of Lakeside Playground, which is unkept, barren, and lacks proper equipment. This land is currently being managed by the Clinton Housing Authority, and we believe it would be beneficial to the resident of Clinton if we worked with them to add and improve this land. The two, uh, $256,600 would pay to add a larger and upgraded playground structures to that, so that the children of Clinton deserve, regardless of their wealth status. The soccer field is also in need of that maintenance and improper nets. We include those additional costs in our calculation. The playground at Philbin Memorial Park and Splash Pad could also benefit from an upgrade. Currently, the playground structures don't have, are not accessible to children who have disabilities. Our budget would include adding a swing structure that is accessible to all children regardless of their physical abilities. When it rains, the area around the playground becomes flooded and muddy. Your pros adding a French rain system to prevent this from happening. There's currently a small road that does not be used by the public, and goes across the park into the courts. Your pros removing it and filling it with grass to increase the amount of space children have to play. Lastly, we would make the mini library larger and have a wider variety of books that the children can borrow from.
We would also like to propose the creation of an animal shelter at 1042 Main Street, which is a commercial property currently available for rent. We would like to rent this property, so people who would like to adopt pets can do so more easily. Our budget would include the cost of renovating the building, caring for the animals, and hiring staff, uh, person to run the facility. The shelter would collaborate with the local veterinarian and the animal control officer, who would oversee its operations. By having a local shelter, we would easily have a place to keep stray animals in town, and get them the treatment that they need. One of the students in our class had a cat that once ran away. Fortunately, the cat was found hiding under a nearby shed. Many pet owners are not so lucky, and having an animal shelter in town can help reunite owners with their pets. Pets create a special bond with their owners, and we should have a place for them in case they get lost or hurt. This, this warrant will allow all, will allow kids of all ages and needs to enjoy playgrounds in town. It would also add a much-needed animal shelter to the town. Overall, this article would benefit the entire community, and we encourage you to vote yes.
Thank you. All right, from the stage, I think one most affected would be Mackenzie from Parks and Recreation.
Starting with Part B, I think that's a fantastic idea. We did the Splash Pad a couple of years ago, and I think work on that playground is overdue, as well as the basketball courts. My concern with Part A is I believe the Lakeside Field is owned by the Housing Authority, which is state rather than town. A great idea, though.
So are you, are you saying that, that any improvements that would have to be made at the Lakeside Field would have to be from federal government, not local government?
It would have to go through the Housing Authority, yes.
Okay. Yes?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
And I just wanted to point out something that's different about this article, I think, than any that we've had before. There's two kinds of spending, basically. There's a capital purchase, which is usually a one-time thing, whereby a fire truck, or a computer, or some pencils, and that's the cost. Then there are recurring costs, such as creating a town-run animal shelter.
Then there are recurring costs, such as creating a town-run animal shelter. We have to hire employees, and employees get paid every year, so that's a cost that recurs and comes back. They also have health insurance and benefits, so it's important to take into account something like that, that is not just a one-time cost, it's going to keep costing the town going forward. So that's just something to keep in mind when you're doing something that happens over and over.
All right, students who would like to weigh in on this?
All right, student comments, go ahead. Naveah?
Naveah Sweeney, Lakeside Ave, I disagree with Section A because... Because... Because there are a lot of younger kids there, but there's also older kids, so I think that I would more focus on the younger kids to use the playground.
Thank you. Mr. Ngano, I have a student who has been paying attention to some of the town meeting, you know, what happened yesterday, actually, and he'd like to make a comment, a connection between the two.
Alex Johnson, Water Street, there's a Clinton bylaw that states that animals cannot be kept overnight, so I just wanted to point that out.
We heard that there was...
About the animal shelter?
We heard that there was some drama about that the other night.
About? There's always drama at a town meeting, but what was it about?
So that the, I believe it was the citizens' petition?
Oh, yes.
And that there was something in town about, already about having like a business or some organization that keeps animals overnight?
Right.
So that there might be a concern with this violating whatever is currently...
Monday night, the article about that was defeated, but it's just, it's more of semantics. I think most people realize that we probably need that. It was overnight boarding of dogs. That's really what the big concern was. And it was defeated, but doesn't mean it can't come back at the next town meeting and be done ultimately. Any other comments on Article 4?
Adrian, come on up.
My name is Adrian Rodriguez, Lakeside Avenue. As someone who lives in the area, I agree with Article 4, Part A, because I know firsthand that a lot of the residents already like to play at the Lakeside Avenue Courts, and adding a field and playground would be very beneficial for the people that already live there and enjoy being in that area.
Okay, who else would like to make a comment? Okay? Yep, you guys can both come up, one at a time.
Anthony Yavis, Lakeside Ave, and I agree with Article 4, Section A, since the playground is definitely overdue for renovation.
All right. You live there? That's good.
Yeah, you say he lives there.
Gabriel Mendez, Lakeside Ave, I agree with Article 4, Section A, because as someone who plays soccer at the Lakeside Field, it would be a great improvement to add soccer goals. And I know kids there who buy the goals themselves, and now they can't, or they can't really afford to buy any more goals. And the part about the playgrounds would really, it would really impact the kids of Lakeside, because I know there's one there already, but it's pretty small and not many people, or not many young kids can enjoy it, because it's very limited in space.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to...
Any other comments?
Zach, go ahead.
Zachary Thomaselli, Pleasant Street, I disagree with Part C because I'm pretty sure that there's already an animal shelter located next to Hannaford's.
All right, disagree with C. Any other comments from the floor? We have somebody over here?
Yep, over there. And then after, I'm going to make a point of order, if you don't mind.
Aubrey Proctor, Oakview Street, I disagree with Article 4, Section B, because although the playground idea is a good idea, the Splashpad just got redone a couple of years ago.
So we had a description, Mr. Bailey, you had talked about how, you know, the process for actually having renovations made at the Lakeside property. And so I guess my point of order is, would it be possible to make an amendment to change, sorry, Article 4, Section A, to either petition, was it run by the state or the federal government?
The Housing Authority.
Yeah, so could we, would it be possible to make an amendment to change it to, instead of to spend, but to petition the Housing Authority to spend?
I think that would be, that would certainly be a proper amendment, and the students are already learning about the layers of government. It's not as easy as let's Clinton do this. It's almost like not Clinton's property, it's federal property. So is that a proposal?
So I'm going to, I'm going to see if someone wants to try, you know, give someone some practice, would anyone like to try making an amendment? We'll help you through it, okay? Yep, you want to do it, Gee? Yep, come on up.
My name is Galermez Bowai, and I live on Berlin Street, and I think amending Part C of Article 4 would be good because the money could just go somewhere else, and we don't really need an animal shelter.
So, okay, so you are, are you proposing an amendment to drop, to delete C completely?
All right, we can do, we can do that first, we'll do that. We can go through his idea first.
That's fine, so we now, thank you very much. So, is there a second?
We have a second. It's seconded.
We do. All right. So now, we need to focus on C only, and the amendment was to completely delete C from Article 4, all right? So any discussion from this point?
Is there anyone who wants to come up and say either why they think we should add this animal shelter, or why we should not?
Should or should not?
Should or should not.
We're talking about the amendment only.
Just for the animal shelter.
This is the animal shelter only, nothing else. Well, I guess we should vote on the amendment then?
All right, we'll vote on that, and then we'll do the other amendment.
All right, remember, we're focusing on C only, not the original warrant article.
So if you, so just...
All those in favor...
Just so it's clear, yep, if you're voting in favor right now, you're saying that you should take out the animal shelter, but keep in the two playgrounds.
That's exactly what I was going to say, Mr. Murray.
Sorry, Mr. Moderator.
All those in favor of the amendment, which is to delete C completely, signify by raising your cards now, please. All right, cards down. And all those opposed to the amendment deleting C, cards up now, please. All right, I think the amendment passed.
I think the amendment did pass, so we have now taken out Part C.
Right, so now we don't have C. Now we have another amendment on A, Mr. Murray?
Yep, so because, just so everyone understands this, the, basically, Lakeside is run by the federal government, not by the town of Clinton, and so the town of Clinton can't go and make those changes. So I'm helping you by making, proposing an amendment to change it, so that you're asking the federal government to spend that money. So, Mr. Moderator, I motion to alter, to amend Article 4, Section A, from to spend $250,600 to petition the Housing Authority to spend. So I would like to add that language in there.
All right.
Can I have a second?
Second?
It's seconded.
Normally, just to let you know, during a town meeting, if this happens, there's a form right down here on that table, where you would write out the details and then present it up here to me. It's done the same way, and I'm usually awake enough to understand this. So the new A, this is the amendment now, would be, would read, "To petition the Housing Authority to spend $250,600 to build a new playground and soccer field at the Lakeside Field." All right, so once again now, we're only talking about that change, that amendment. Anybody would like to discuss the pros and cons of that change? Please come to the microphone.
I think we'll vote, yeah. For, for the sake of time, I think we'll vote on that change, and then we'll vote on the overall amendment, and then we'll be taking our intermission.
Okay, great. All right, so now, once again, we're only voting on the amendment from Mr. Murray, which is to change the wording of A to say that we're going to petition, we're not going to spend the money, we're going to petition the Housing Authority to spend the money. So all those in favor of the amendment, signify by raising your card now, please. Thank you, cards down. And those opposed, thank you, the amendment has passed, so we have a new A. Nice job. Now we want to go...
Now, so now we're going to vote on all of Article 4 with the changes in it.
All right, so the new Article 4 changes the words in A and gets rid of C completely. We're talking now about the whole, the whole article. All those in favor of Article 4 signify by raising your card now, please. Thank you, and cards down. And all those opposed, cards up. Thank you, the new Article 4 has been approved.
Congratulations. So, ladies and gentlemen, please listen carefully. We are going to have a 10-minute intermission. You've been doing a really great job, you should be very proud of yourselves right now. And the, I believe it was Mr. Cobus, was kind enough also to go and help us by getting some snacks and water bottles for all of you. So here's how this is going to work, okay? We are going to go out these doors, and you will see that there are, that there are some snacks and water bottles. If I could get a couple teachers over there to just help out for a moment with distributing that, and in just a few minutes anyways, you know, you can get up, you can stretch, you can use the bathroom, fill up your water bottle if you need to, and in about eight minutes, I'll start asking everyone to start heading back here. Please do not eat in this room, okay? You'll need to eat out there. We are going to resume our mock town meeting. Mr. Ngano just wants to go and make a comment about when people go up to speak at the microphone, and I also just want to go and pass along one request, also from our folks that run the media here. When you go to speak at the microphone, remember, just try to speak a little bit slower and clearer, okay? Everyone's been doing great in terms of volume, but just make sure that you're not speaking too quickly, so that way we can make sure to capture everything that you are saying, okay? Mr. Ngano, you had a comment as well?
Yes, just make sure, the comments have been great, but we don't hear them completely many times. So when you approach a microphone, start to speak, but look at me, and I'm going to give you some kind of sign that probably is like this, meaning get closer to the microphone so you can hear me. I'm sure you can hear me now, but when I step back here, not as well. So you've got to be right on the microphone. So start to speak so I can hear what you're saying, but then look for me for a little sign, okay? Great.
Mr. Murray?
Yes?
Before we start, just going back to Article 4 about Lakeside, so earlier today, we had Representative Kilcoin here, and she represents our, our area. So for something, if you're looking for nets down at that Lakeside Ave, what we can do is, and I can help you with the contact information, and I, and it's a very similar process, but you, you can bring that to the Housing Authority to present your idea, and then Representative Kilcoin can then help advocate for funding at the state level. So if you're looking for a couple goals, or you're looking for that basketball court repair, you can do that right now, and that's, that's just what the process is. And instead of having to convince voters, you're convincing the Housing Authority Board. So I think that's a great idea, and there's a process in place for it, so I'm more than having help with it.
The students actually wrote letters to legislators earlier this year, several had written to Representative Kilcoin about some bills she was working on, and so if anyone wants to actually go and do that, I would be happy to help them out. Thanks for the idea.
Terrific. We ready to roll?
Ready to roll, we'll move on to Article 5.
All right, Article 5, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer from the stabilization fund, or take from available funds, the sum of $283,352 or any other sum, said sum to be expended for the recreation of the Nashville River Beach located on River Street, with improvements to parking, safety, and management, or act in any manner relating thereto.
Second.
All right, Article 5 has been moved and seconded. Student speakers, please.
Good morning. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Yaseen Ibrahim.
And my name is Alan D. Santiago.
We are proposing a warrant to spend $283,352 to recreate the Nashville River Beach on River Street and make improvements to parking, safety, and management. Reopening this beach would add an attraction to our small town. This beach would provide entertainment, attract visitors from other towns, and would create jobs in our community. Currently, there are not any public beaches to swim in at town that are overseen by lifeguards. We asked middle school staff in the form of a survey about their thoughts on our proposal. Nearly 80% of respondents said that they would support it being recreated. They also shared positive memories of the beach and how they would spend time with their families there. Several staff pointed out issues with parking and pollution with the previous beach, but we have found solutions to all of these issues. The way we would solve the parking issue is by creating a parking lot in between the road on River Street and Route 70. A retaining wall would be built to maintain stability along the slope that Route 70 is on. The parking lot would have 30 available parking spaces, which is much more than there ever were previously. We included in our budget a ticket booth and gate system. Visitors would pay a small fee to use the beach and an additional fee if they are parking. Residents of Clinton would pay a discounted rate, and seasonal passes could be purchased at the discounted rate as well.
To take this area, to make this area a functional beach again, it will take some work. Currently, the area where the beach would be located is covered with grass. There is also a retention pond. We would bring sand to cover sections of the grass to churn it into a beach. We would also build a retention wall, a retaining wall around the retention pond to prevent it from flooding. To prevent harm from occurring at this beach, we have budgeted additional safety measures. We would add, we would add a lifeguard stand to make sure that someone is on duty at all times when it is open. At this moment, there is nothing from preventing a small child from falling over the spillway located under Chestnut Street. Our warrant would add a mesh grade to cover the spillway entrance to allow water to continue to flow, but prevent someone from falling over the edge. Another safety measure our article will implement is by creating a designated swim area with ropes and buoys. We would also make this area nicer by including picnic tables for family to use for relaxing and eat on. To help keep this area clean, we would install portable bathrooms and trash bins. For all these reasons, we believe that bringing back the Clinton Beach located on Nashville River would be beneficial for the town and community. We hope you vote yes on our proposal.
Very good. You guys addressed almost all of the issues for the people who would say no to this, obviously. Folks up here on the stage, your thoughts on it?
Mr. Moderator, in addition to being on the Select Board, I'm also on the Conservation Commission, and I would just say, because it's so close to the water, the Conservation Commission, there are five of us, we're essentially tasked with enforcing the Wetlands Protection Act. So if there's any building that's going to happen close to water, we want to make sure that's not going to negatively impact that water. So that's something you would have to go before the Conservation Commission, present your plans there, and get them to sign off.
Any other thoughts up here?
I, am I allowed to ask a question?
Sure, why not?
I, hi, so it's my first year up here, and I was just curious if, in this article, but also the other articles, a lot of it have very specific dollar amounts?
I was wondering the $2, yes, there's, there's two at the end, right?
Exactly, so it's a very specific dollar amount, like, did you guys, while you're researching this, get like actual pricing on certain things, or how did that work?
Yeah, they did, so they, they, I showed them how on Google Maps you can actually kind of, you can find the square footage of an area, and then they went and looked on different companies' websites, how much it would cost to get specific amounts of sand, for example. They do a lot of research to come up with these amounts, yeah.
Well done, well done.
Now, once again, the town of Clinton doesn't own that, I would assume they don't? don't, right? Not to be a downer, but once again, I think that's state.
MWRA?
Yep.
Yeah, they're notoriously difficult to deal with, too.
Yes, they are.
Best of luck with that.
Yep. So that, that does create a problem, and I'm one of those old timers, too, that, that was the, one of the best things to do, that the beach was the most popular place, no doubt about it. Um, but the parking lot that you're talking about, which there is no parking now, you'd have to get that land from the state to, to use it as a parking lot. Um, you know, again, I don't want to, you know, depress anyone, this is a great idea, and people have talked about it for years and years. Originally, that was closed, I think because of bacteria in the water or something, there was a problem with the water itself there, so.
The students had gone, and they had heard from a couple of teachers that there was also issues of littering, so it's possible that maybe the littering was what caused the, what you're referencing there.
Yes.
So are there any students that would like to go and speak on this one? Yep, all the way over there.
My name's Austin Silvio, and I agree with Article Five because it allows more activity for kids.
Thank you.
Navy, go ahead. Navy, yep, Jaden, go next, okay?
Hi, my name is Navy Amasi Wilson Street, and I agree with this article because it would be a great place for kids and family to go on a hot summer day.
Thank you.
I said Jaden E., yep, Jaden Sparza.
Jaden Sparza, Lancaster Road. I think this is a great idea. It could provide additional income for the town if you were, decide to like charge people.
Good thought. Bree, Bree, for you can come on up.
Brianna Castillo, Lakeside Ave. I don't think Article Five is necessary because it's a lot of money, we could use that money for something else.
Fabio Ramirez, Allen Street. Um, I like this article because a lot of people like to go to the beach during the summer.
My name is Jagger Ball, I live on Walnut Street. I think this article would be good because I think it would be good for families to go and cool off for the summers.
Does anybody have any, does any, just out of curiosity, because we've heard very positively, does anyone have any concerns about the article? Any concerns about it? Jimmy, go ahead.
Jimmy Levo, Main Street. I have a question about this article, so I wanted to know, like, where are the people going to be able to park?
Could anyone, whoever, great question. Whoever did, who did our research for, uh, that class, who was, could anyone come and speak up and say, like, where you were talking about having the parking? You gotta defend, you can say, come on, defend your article.
Yep, the original speakers should probably come up, I think you addressed.
Yaseen, you want, yep.
You addressed parking, but I'm not sure exactly where it would be.
Yaseen Ibrahim, Main Street. So the parking lot would be in between River Street and Route 70. So what we would do is, there's a big area of land that has like trees and grass, and we would get rid of it, do some like landscaping, and put a parking lot there that would be able to have up to 30 cars, so that's, um, pretty good.
All right, yep.
Just so everyone can try to picture it, there's a yellow gate, and there's a road that goes down it, where people can walk and bike, and there is kind of this grassy area on the left, and it leads, it's then a hill, which is then the, the road, Route 70, so they're talking about taking that grassy area, turning it into a place where people could park, and then building a wall, so that way the, uh, highway, the Route 70 anyways, doesn't go and kind of collapse then on.
Everybody get that? River Road is the, is the road that's blocked off, the road that goes right along the river's edge, and that's the one that has the gate, that you can't go beyond, that's River Road. And then the hill going up to the dam itself is Route 70. So they're talking about that area, which starts off very narrow, but it gets wider as you go, but you're putting the parking into the hill of Route 70.
Okay, we have time for one more comment. Yep, go ahead, Kaden, and then we'll go to a vote, Mr. Ngano.
Um, Kaden Fornier, High Street. Would there be like, would the town be getting any profit from this, and if so, can you estimate how much?
I can let, Yaseen also has some comments about this. And then we'll go to a vote, Mr. Ngano.
So the town would be profiting because it costs money to, um, go to the beach. It, um, we could like to compare it to Long Lake in Littleton, and how there, so, non-residents would have to pay a certain amount of money, then people from Clinton would pay a little bit less, and if you're parking, you would pay more. And there's also, um, a seasonal pass, so if you would buy that, you would spend more money, well, in the long run, less money, but you would be able to go every single day. There's, and that, that goes into the gate system, that's how you would pay.
Thank you. All right, I think it's time to, uh, to vote. Article Five, um, Article Five is set, it hasn't been amended or anything else, so all those in favor of Article Five signify by raising your cards now, please. Thank you, cards down, and those opposed, thank you, the article has been approved. Nice job. Mr. Carrigan, Article Six.
Mr. Carrigan? Sorry, we're gonna, we're gonna send you to, uh, to talk to the state, okay?
All right, Article Six. Um, Mr. Moderator, I moved to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer from the stabilization fund, uh, or take from available funds, the sum of $12,055,000, or any other sum, said sum to be expended for the purchased property at 119 Chestnut Street, renovating it, moving the Parks and Recreation Department to that location, and establishing the building as a community center and function hall, or act in any manner relating thereto.
Second.
All right, Article Six has been moved and seconded. Student speakers on Article Six, please.
Our two speakers, Article Six, please.
Remember, nice and close to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Sophia Alvarado.
And my name is Zachary Thomas Ali.
And we are here to present the reasoning behind why the town should purchase and renovate the armory located at 119 Chestnut Street. The armory is in disrepair and is currently not being used, but it has a lot of potential to benefit the community. This building has an area of 15,000 square feet and contains a whole basketball court, a stage, and office space inside just waiting to be used. This project will cost a little over $12 million, but that price will not only renovate the building, but it will also purchase and improve the adjacent land. In the long run, we believe that this project will be profitable, and we will explain how. We believe the current Parks and Recreation Building does not have enough space for the kinds of events they would like to run. Moving their department to the armory would give them not only an office space, but a massive facility to run their programming out of. For example, basketball camps, art-themed camp, gar, camps, gardening programs, musical and drama programs, seasonal events, and so much more. Over time, having these kinds of programs will help generate money, which will help pay back the cost of the needed renovations.
One issue we identified was that this building is located at a busy intersection. Our budget would improve safety by installing traffic lights, an electronic qua, crosswalk, and fencing to keep children and adults safe. In addition to having this building be used by the Park and Rec Department, it would be rented out for, as used as a function hall. It could be rented for birthday parties, workout classes, weddings, baby showers, conferences, and other events. Function halls are often rented for rates of over $1,000 per event. This is yet another way in which the town would make back its investment into the property. This building has been a part of Clinton since 1914. It has been in our town for over 100 years. It would be great if we could keep this building as a part of our community, but make it something modern and useful. We believe there are many benefits to having a community center and a function hall in our community. Many other towns have them, and we currently do not. There are not many recreational facilities near us besides the current Park and Recs building, but it is very small. Community centers allow for many events for children, which will teach and enhance their social skills, and introduce them to a healthy lifestyle through athletics. Not only would this benefit our community, but people from surrounding towns are also welcome to rent out this facility, or attend Park and Rec programs. This would bring even more money to the town. We'd like to thank you for taking your time to listening to our pro, proposal, and we hope you vote to approve Article Six.
Very good, thank you. Well, if we're planning to move Mackenzie's office, we should probably hear from Mackenzie. Go ahead.
I think this is a fantastic idea and way overdue. Um, you hit all of my reasoning. I bring this up all the time, every chance I get. We definitely have an immense need for more indoor recreation space, and I think it's awesome.
Very good.
I might be a little biased, though.
Anyone else on the panel want to weigh in on that?
Mr. Moderator, yeah, your number's actually pretty good. Um, the, uh, state, believe it or not, offered this to us basically for free, um, several years ago, but we estimated that just the walk-in cost would be about $10 million. It's in terrible shape, and it's, um, not to go off the side too much, but it, it's, it's a great reason why it's so important to take care of the buildings we have. I don't know if you noticed, the floor, um, that you're standing on is, is brand new. Um, we took some money from, uh, COVID relief money to, to replay, repair that. Um, it's also a reason why we started a facilities department a few years ago, to keep an eye on things. Um, often we, we are, uh, try and cut corners and save money, and we avoid things like putting new roofs on things, or new floors, or new siding. Um, and that's how you get something like the armory, which is heartbreaking, um, because it's a gorgeous space. The question is, um, do we want to spend $12 million? So that's a, that's a big number.
And I believe now, it was owned by the state, correct?
Someone else owns it, yeah.
And now it's privately owned.
Yep.
Parking, I know, would be a, a major issue unless we can get, uh, uh, probably St. John's to sell to the community, you know, that little area above the wall for parking, maybe that would help, but. Anyone else with some comments from up here on the stage?
I have several students who have some comments they'd like to make. Um, start off right here, Eva, and then afterwards, Cam, you're going to go next, okay?
Eva Aganelli, Horseshoe Lane. I disagree with Article Six because I believe it's very expensive, and it could increase the taxes for the people of Clinton. Thank you.
Dan, you want to go up?
Cam Eric, uh, Haskell Ave. I disagree with Article Six because I feel at its price, it's not worth it, especially with the school that, um, needs a lot of money for, like, building.
Nathaniel Road, Auburn Street. Uh, I have a question. How, why does it cost so much just to renovate a building and add some lights?
Well, I, I can't really answer that all as, all that well, but from what I understand, the, the, the floor, like, the gym floor is, is totally buckled, I think. There, there's, almost like you're walking down the floor, and there's this huge bump all the way across. Just an aside, by the way, that used to be Clinton High School's home basketball court, back in the days when Clinton High didn't even have a gym, and that was the gym, that's where our, our Gales played their basketball. But that was a long time ago, and, and the building has deteriorated seriously. It is a busy intersection. There is no parking unless we get someone else to give us or sell us land.
I believe part of the issue, too, Mr. Ngano, at least from what I have heard, I spoke to Officer Sylvester about this, and he told me, if you look at the building right now, I believe that there's some mesh in, in front of it, and that, I believe that the facade is starting to fall off, which basically, for those of you who don't know what that means, basically some of the bricks in the front, they're worried about them potentially falling forward and hitting someone walking near there. So there is a lot of work. Uh, we do have someone who would like to speak?
Go ahead, sir.
Elielville Frank, uh, High Street. I disagree with this article because I feel it would raise taxes and mortgages, and I know of multiple residents in Clinton that struggle to pay their mortgages and rents. Thank you.
Good thought.
Great point. Yeah, Stephen, you want to go up? Next.
Uh, Ty Johnson, Wilson Street. I believe that this is too much money to be spent on one building when there are other problems in Clinton, such as the roads.
Stephen Caredad, 30th, uh, Grove Street. I agree with Article Six because over time, the money that was spent would be made back in the long run. Thank you.
Um, Princess Abra, Green Street. And I disagree with this article because the budget's too high for a small town like Clinton.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Castillo, and I disagree, I disagree with Article Six because I think it's too expensive, uh, for renovating a building, and I think we could use that money to, uh, get more useful things for our town.
I'm going to ask one thing, we're going to stop that line from increasing anymore, because then we're going to have to go into the next one. But thank you for those of you who are getting up, so, yep, keep going.
Hi, my name is Sarah, and I'm from Franklin Street, and I don't agree with Article Six because it is too much money to renovate, since we already have Parks and Rec building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Aubrey Proctor, Oakview Street. I disagree with this article because we already have a perfectly fine working Parks and Rec Department with a big yard space for kids to be able to play in, and if we do move Parks and Rec to there, we won't have that space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ella Pharoah, Woodford Road. I think that the money could be used for something more important.
Thank you.
Hi, Stephanie Lopez, uh, Main Street. I think $12 million is too much for a, like, a renovation.
Yaseen Ibrahim, Main Street. Um, I think that not only it is a extreme price, but also, think about all the people who are older, like, like 70 or 80 or something, that, like, their taxes are going to be increased, and they're helping pay for this, and I don't think this, like, 80-year-old is going to be running around shooting hoops, you know? So, that's.
And you're building that new school, too, right, Dr. Meyer?
It's like, I, I don't think you wouldn't want to have your tax money go into something that you're not going to be.
Don't put me on the spot.
I, I think Terry would house you in one-on-one.
I'm listening, Terry.
Anya Roy, Winter Street. Um, although, like, people are concerned about the price, it will event, the building will eventually pay itself off, and the price isn't just for one thing, it's for the intersection and the building itself.
Good point, thank you.
Kevin Pisoa, Pleasant Street. I think that $12 million is an unnecessary amount of money to spend on a building that's decaying.
Nashla Diaz, Pouch Street, and I participated on this research for this article. I understand that the amount may be a lot to ask for, but I believe that since the building has no current use, it could be perf, a perfect fit for the new Parks and Recreation since it includes a gym space, like a basketball court, and a stage. Thank you.
Mr. Ngano, we're going to have a vote?
Sure, why not? All right, Article Six hasn't been amended, it's been greatly discussed, which is terrific, a lot of opinions, so let's vote, all right? All in favor of Article Six signify by raising your cards now, please, in favor of. All right, cards down, and all. And all those opposed to Article Six? Article Six is defeated. Thank you.
Sorry, period six.
Sorry about that. Article Seven?
Mr. Moderator. I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer from the stabilization fund, or take from available funds the one-time sum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or any other sum said some to be expended to create a shelter for victims of violence and their children, for Clinton residents, and an accompanying twenty-four-seven hotline for victims of violence. Clinton will also aim to coordinate with neighboring towns in order to provide collective financial assistance and opportunities for other people to stay there as applicable. After the first year, which requires purchasing a house in town, all subsequent years will have a cost of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars per annum or act in any manner relating thereto.
Second.
All right, Article Seven has been moved and seconded. Student speakers on Article Seven, please. Nice and close to the mic now.
Good morning, my name is Ella Farrell.
My name is Lorena Di Souza, and we are part of Mr. Braille's Block Five class. We're here today to propose a bill to create a safe place and hall line for the prevention of violence in the town of Clinton. In order for this bill to come to life, we propose to spend a one-time sum of seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, eighteen thousand and sixty-five dollars, then a sum of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars annually.
The money would be spent on keeping a running hotline for residents of Clinton and neighboring towns, buying out and slightly renovating a safe space to shelter people in need, hiring workers and security guards. While doing research, we figured out that programs to help victims of violence in Massachusetts are strongly needed. Out of all three hundred and fifty-one Massachusetts towns and cities, only thirty-four have available programs to help domestic violence victims. None of these programs are remotely in the Clinton area. In 2024, there were a total of fifty-nine crimes in Clinton, thirty-five of those being assaults. That is nearly sixty percent of total crimes in Clinton being assaults. There are countless benefits that come out of a safe and comforting place for victims of violence.
We plan to buy the property on four Winter Street, Clinton MA, for four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Then twenty-five thousand dollars will be put towards renovating the floor and finishing the basement. Twenty thousand going towards furnishing the house and adding a clear room to the basement. Three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to air conditioners, bed frames, and washers and dryers. The victims will be provided with food cooked by a private chef. Two security guards will be taking shifts watching over the shelter. Three social workers will be at the shelter, one answering phones, and two counseling the victims. In the end, this will not only give the victims in our community a safe space to stay, but it will also help them feel wanted and loved. Thank you for listening to our proposal. We hope that this article has a chance to get passed in the future.
Thank you. All right, Article Seven from up here on the stage. Any comments?
Mr. Moderator, I think it's a great idea. If you look around neighboring communities, Lancaster, Sterling, Bolton, Berlin, they're not like Clinton. We're very dense, we're very diverse, and oftentimes, members of our community need help. It's a reason Matt and I, Mr. Kobus and I, supported, actually, the whole board. We took five hundred thousand dollars from COVID money and gave it to Wheat. They're building a building across from Mr. Zee's, actually, where Mr. Zee's used to be. So you'll see that breaking ground soon, and I think the top floor is gonna have apartments for people, you know, in situations like this. But what I like about Clinton is that we are a leader in the region, not just our community. So I think it's a great idea to take care of people who need help.
Thank you. Someone else from on the stage? I think it's a wonderful idea. I do think that there may be more resources available in Clinton than you might think. Certainly, Wheat does that now, I think. They have agreements with various people where they can put women or children who are abused. I think First Concern might do that, too, next to the Coffee Lands on High Street. They have some kind of place somewhere else where they can help people who are being abused or whatever. But, you know, it's still a wonderful idea, and we probably need more of it. Yes?
I think Terry kind of hit on it's a great idea, and I think if you were serious about it, like, you'd get support from our police department, report to here, have a Clinton court system, a school department with your guidance teachers, your counselors, your school psychologists, because it is an issue, it's a serious issue. And I don't know which member said it earlier. You'd get support for this from our state reps and our state senators, which could get you the grants and the money, and also point you in the right direction as to who would fund this, not just the initial cost, but the long-term cost, because it is an issue. And I couldn't hear the students as, actually, how many communities have these, but I know it is not many. So again, if you're serious on something like that, those are the people that would gain you that support to point you the way to produce something like this.
And as Mr. Kerrigan said, that there's going to be a brand-new Wheat building that is going to have cafeteria and store, and also apartments for people who need temporary shelter. And I don't know when they'll be breaking ground soon, I think.
I believe so, yeah.
So that will be spectacular for this town. Students, questions, comments, discussion?
Chloe?
Article Seven.
Chloe Gonzaga, Terrence Avenue. I agree and support Article Seven because the creation of a shelter for victims of violence can help solve a huge issue that not only takes place in Clinton, but all over the world. Thank you.
Sarah? So everyone is aware, I'm gonna prioritize people who have not yet spoken first.
My name is Sarah, and I participated on this article, and I agree with this article because I think it is a good hotline for victims that have suffered from domestic violence, and it would help people know that there's a safe place to feel comfortable.
Very good.
Bianca?
Bianca Morales, High Street. I agree with this article because this can help many people who are suffering from abuse to seek shelter or help.
Hayden?
Hayden Kaiser, Prescott Street. I agree that this is a project to consider. Seems how it may be hard for one to escape any violence and find shelter.
Go ahead, Ben.
Pam Morales. I agree with this article because it will keep people in town safe.
Andrew, Drew, go ahead.
Drewie in Lawrence Street. I agree with this article because I think it'll help people get away from the people who are trying to abuse them.
Ben, you want to go? And then I know there are a couple people from Mr. Braille's classes. You'll be up in a moment, okay? And then we'll have a vote.
Ben Hernandez, Gorham Avenue. I have a question. What towns will Clinton partner with?
That's a great question. Does anyone, just a question, does anyone from the group that did the research on it, do you have an answer for that? Did you look at maybe what other towns you might want to partner with? Does anyone have an answer to that? Yep?
My name is Lorena, and we were wanting to work with neighboring towns like Bolton, Lancaster, Sterling, just surrounding towns.
Okay, great, thank you. I think we have time for two more comments, and then we'll go on to a vote, okay? And, yep?
Luna Jimenez. I agree with this article because I think the victims of violence should get more heard and get more help. Thank you.
We have time for one more, somebody who has not spoken yet, Mari.
Mr. Murray, do they get some kind of extra credit or something for getting up here?
They do.
Oh, wow. They should be rushing up here, then. I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name's Maria Mesquita, and I agree with this article because most victims of violence don't really have a place to go or anyone they can, like, open up to.
Thank you.
Great point. We can have, yep, we can have one more, so, yep, you want to go? And then we'll put it to a vote, because then we'll have our last article, I believe, Mr. Ngano.
I like this one because I know people that have been in this situation before.
Ready to vote? All right, Article Seven has been moved, seconded, and discussed. So get your cards ready. All in favor of Article Seven? Cards up, please. All right, thank you. Cards down, and all those opposed to Article Seven? Thank you. Article Seven has been approved. Thank you. Congratulations. All right, we're on to Article Eight, the last article.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if... I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer from the stabilization fund, or take from available funds the sum of five thousand six hundred dollars or any other sum said some to be expended by the Department of Public Works to install ten bike racks in locations where bikers frequent travel around town or act in any manner relating thereto.
Second.
All right, Article Eight has been moved and seconded, and we have three very enthusiastic speakers already at the microphone. How about that? Go ahead, gentlemen.
Hi, my name is Galer.
Hi, my name is Lucas.
Hi, my name is Antonio. We are going to talk about our article.
We are here today to ask you to vote yes for this Aaron article. Our article asks for five thousand six hundred dollars to buy and install ten bike racks throughout parts of Clinton.
We are asking for these bike racks to be installed at Central Park, the South Metal Soccer Field, the Berlin Street Street, the Berlin Street Splash Pad, the Verric Street Basketball Course, the Verric Street Skate Park, and the High School. We would like to have two at the following locations: Soccer Field, the Basketball Courts, the Splash Pad, and the Central Park.
All of these locations are used by students for the middle school and middle school. Most students are invited to bike to this location and not to not have a play to play to bike.
The bikes are normally on the ground and make it difficult for people to enjoy these areas. Thank you for considering our Aaron article.
Thank you. All right. Article Eight, comments, perhaps from DPW first?
I think this would be better answered by Lee. I think she has a better idea of where the bike racks are located down on High Street.
That's good, nice passing the buck.
I'd like to thank Director Bartlett for that lateral. I admit, I didn't quite catch everything that the young gentleman was saying there a little bit, but I got the gist of it. Exactly, that bike racks are an important thing and something that's needed, frankly, in the downtown. They do take up quite a bit of space, so the first step, as I'm sure that the gentleman who did the research would tell you, is you need to look at where they're needed most, and then, secondly, where you have space for those bike racks. That being said, I do strongly encourage the passing of this article because you do, you want to encourage people not just to hop in a car, get a lift from somebody, but if you've got a bike, you also can get a job as a fourteen- to seventeen-year-old because you can get there in town. So all those, all these different articles that you guys have put forward today have been wonderful because a lot of them interweave. They support one another, and the end result is a better community, a healthier, more vibrant, more employed one, so, and a more interactive one. So shout out on the bike rack article, and...
Anyone else on the stage like to weigh in on Article Eight? All right, if not, student speakers?
Nico, I know you want to make a comment?
Nico Marzilli, Sterling Road. I agree with Article Eight because it encourages people to get more exercise on bikes instead of just driving places in cars. And for younger people who can't drive, it gives them an opportunity to get from place to place.
That's a great point.
Good thought.
Jael?
Jael BS Park Street. I agree with this article because there's a lot of bikes over the years getting stolen. There's no place to put their bikes.
Just a reminder, I'm gonna prioritize people who have not spoken yet. Marcus, would you like to go?
Marcus Cardona, Green Street. I, hold on, I forgot. Oh, I agree with this article because I once had a bike stolen from me because there wasn't a place to securely lock it up.
Thank you.
Let's be respectful, remember when people are coming up?
Scarlett Orlono of Rado.
Nice and close to the mic, miss.
Everyone else, please, let's keep our volumes down.
Scarlett Orlono of Rado, I agree with this article because the large amount of bikers in this town are at risk of their bike getting stolen or damaged.
Good point, good point. Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Andrew Sandberg, Colonial Drive. I think bike racks could help because not a lot of people have places to put their bikes.
Jack, have you spoken yet? Hold on, is anyone not spoken yet? Yep, you have the ladies over there, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Maria Clara.
Hi, my name is Maria Eduard. We are here today to support this article. We think that half the bike racks will make sure that bikes are not damaged and so that bikes are not stolen. Half the bike racks will make sure that all the areas are not crowded with the bikes on the ground. People can get hurt if the bikes are on the ground. We think the bike racks should keep all the bikes off the way, off the children. It will also make it easier for parents who have busy encourage. Parents who have babies, where babies will not need to go on a bunch of bikes on the ground.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Would like to go?
Anyone else who wants to pass the course this year, right?
It is a test grade, this project, goes with it. Ashley?
Ashley Acker and I live on Water Street. I agree with this article because it will provide spaces for bikers that want to bike, and it will help them put their bikes in places that they want to put them in without getting stolen.
Good.
Jack, you can go ahead.
Anyone else, this is your last chance.
We'll have Jack speak, and then I think we'll move it to a vote.
I feel that this is a cheap but good investment for the town because many bikers have no place to put their bikes.
Thank you. Want to do voice? Since this is the last one, Mr. Murray, would we like to do voice again?
Oh, would you guys like to be loud again? That was interesting, I'm not sure. Okay, we had some people enthusiastically do it, so let's see. So we'll do it by a voice vote, we'll do yeas and nays.
Okay.
For our last one.
Article Eight, the last one. You've done a great job all day, by the way. All those in favor of Article Eight will shout out yay at this time. All right. How about any nays? You just wanted to shout out, that's all you wanted to do. All right, the article is approved, very good.
All right, so, Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to adjourn the 2025 Mock Town Meeting.
Is there a second? There is.
For those of you who don't know what the word adjourn means, I'm making a motion to end the meeting. Oh, we got a lot of seconds!
Yeah. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting? Please raise your hand or whatever. Okay, great. And opposed? Thank you very much. Opposed? Oh, there's a few people who don't want the meeting to end, okay. But they were outvoted.
I guess we're gonna have to stay for a couple more hours.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Eighth graders, I just want to say that you did awesome. You should be very proud of yourselves. And I'll tell you right now, you 100% earned that speaking extra credit. And, and some time outside when we get back.